All right. Does anyone know what Manny's is? Raise your hand if you know what Manny's is. Okay, a couple of folks, thank you. Glad you're here. Who has never been here before? Raise your hand. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thanks for being here. Manny's is a venue for politics and civic life. We also have a nonprofit restaurant that hires and trains formerly homeless and formerly incarcerated folks in our kitchen. Very proud of it. So if you bought a beer, which you did, I hope you purchased that. Thank you. You're supporting one of the very few nonprofit service kitchen restaurants left in San Francisco. So thanks for doing that. It's really cool to see you guys here. I really appreciate you being here. Thank you to everyone joining on Zoom. This is one of those nights where we have twice as many people on Zoom as we have in person. So you're, thank you for being here on Zoom. In that own way, and thank you for being here in person in this way. Tonight, 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 we are gonna talk about a question that is on a lot of folks' minds in our city. It's timely. We decided to keep this date because ballots have already dropped on this question. And folks are mailing in their ballots right now. And so we thought we didn't want to miss this opportunity. Tonight's conversation is part of our Tough Questions series. We started it with the Director of the Department of Behavioral Health on what should, what should San Francisco do? For folks who are suffering from mental illness in our streets. The second question was, should JFK be closed to cars? And we brought the leaders of the safe kid free. The, well, you know, safe JFK that closed to cars and the people who kids safe and the people who wanted to open it at cars again, the museums and those folks. And we had a conversation between the two of them. And this is our third. And the question is, should the San Francisco School Board be recalled? Here's what I want you to know. It's what I want to do with these conversations is two things. One, Manny's is like a table, right? And we're setting the table for you. The meal is understanding, learning information. So that when you leave here, you can leave knowing more, learning more, and having a better understanding of the issues affecting our city and our society. The second thing I want to do is I want to show that we can have an adult, civil, respectful conversation, even with people who we disagree with, even if we disagree with them emotionally. That this is purpose of having a physical space for these kinds of conversations. And so I'm gonna ask you to help me model this. If you support one side of the recall or the other, I'd ask you with respect to keep that to yourself. So no claps, no snaps, no jeers, no leers, no kind of like, I like what he said. Because the truth is, I want to create a safe space for both folks, for people who think that the School Board should be recalled, people who think the School Board should not be recalled. So I do not actually want audience participation tonight. Normally, I would say, I want to know how you feel and how you think. But I actually, because of the nature of tonight's subject, I'd ask if you have, feel a certain emotional way. But either of these sides, come up to me afterwards, talk to the person that you just met about it. But let's create a safe space for our panelists and for each other. With that, I'd like to welcome to the stage Autumn, remind me your last name? I'm Autumn Loyan over there, the, one of the co-founders of the School Board Recall Campaign. And Faoga Moliga, a member of the San Francisco School Board, the Vice President of it, to the Manny's Baby Stage. Let's give them a round of applause. Have you, and yes, you don't have to if you don't want to, while we're being, while we're on stage. Okay, I've been thinking a lot about this conversation. I've been, I've been a little nervous about it, and your mic should be behind you, Faoga, somewhere. Yes, you got it. First of all, I just want to say thanks to both of you for coming here and trusting to do this right and to host this. It is a dicey subject. It is, it is something, it is a debate that I think in some respects has been super productive and in some, in some ways has not. And so I'm really glad that we can, we can have this conversation in person. So just so I want to set some context, why are we here? Why are we doing this? Ballots have dropped. If you are a resident of San Francisco, you should have received about, did everyone receive their ballot? Who did not receive their ballot? Did anyone not get it yet? Okay, I got mine. The election is February 15th. So you can mail in your ballot at any time. The last day to vote is February 15th, and this is one of the questions on our ballot. So first, I want to ask, my notes here. First, I'm gonna ask you, Faoga, to introduce yourself. Who are you? Why did you run to be on the School Board? And what are, tell us a little bit about some of the things that you've worked on while, while being on the School Board. Let's start with you.
Thank you.
Hey, good to see you.
Good to see you too.
And I just ask for both of you, keep the mic right up to your mouth because they're a little bit, they're not as sensitive as they should be.
So, thank you Manny for inviting me. I appreciate it. I appreciate you making the space. You know, I'm Samon. My name is Faoga Moliga. I'm the first Pacific Islander to ever run for School Board, to ever be elected in this city, right? And now I'm from this city, grew up in San Francisco. I'm a district kid through and through. I was just sharing with somebody back here a story about my home and teacher, who is now the principal at Mission High School. And just to kind of, you know, I'm a father as well. You know, my, my mother, all my cousins and, you know, their mothers and fathers, a lot of them went to school here in the school district. And so we're from the islands, the Pacific Islands, and we migrated here. So a lot of folks who are immigrants who have took, taken the path of migration here to, to the city, you know, understand, you know, so we come from Samoan, right? I was born in Hawaii. She brought me here when I was one. I'm a clinical social worker, right, by trade, right? I'm getting ready to get licensed soon. I do all the 5150s that you see on the streets in terms of kids and adults, right? Been doing that for the last five years. And, you know, after undergraduate, I came right back to San Francisco and dedicated my life to the city. And so getting to Manny's question around, you know, why am I on the School Board and why did I run for the School Board? You know, I don't know how long a lot of folks have been here in this city. But, you know, when you talk about marginalization, talk about like poverty, you know, you don't really hear people talk about Pacific Islanders. But the data around Pacific Islanders is very stark. People understand that, but you don't hear it. And the reason being is, we never had any representation in places that really actually mattered. So I was given one task coming out of grad school. You need to go to these School Board meetings, and you need to tell the school district that they need to do better for our kids. And I went to the meetings. And this is why I sympathize and empathize with a lot of parents who've been frustrated over this, you know, pandemic. Went to the meeting, there were no Pacific Islanders. I was the only one. And my buddy, who I got on the School Board, Stevon, texted him and said, hey, bro, you ain't talking about Pacific Islanders. Well, he said, get up and say something. I was like, well, you sitting right there. I have to get on the School Board. It was at that moment, I was like, if I'm gonna come to these meetings by myself, I might be sent on the other side. So I don't know if you guys are listening to me, right? And I ran for School Board. Lo and behold, got appointed by the mayor. We ran one of the strongest campaigns that election cycle, and I'm on board now. So my thing on the School Board really is around why I came there in the first place. To close the opportunity gap for Pacific Islanders, Black students, Latinx, and immigrant families who are struggling. That I've been working on. The other piece is, not sure if they ever had a social worker on the School Board. So that's very important to me. And I've been doing that work, right? If you look at the resolutions that I authored and passed unanimously, they address social services and mental health in the school district in a real way, not fluff and buff, in a real way. Because what do you need to address mental health? Period. You need capacity, which are bodies. You need money to fund that, and you need a plan. All three of those are now in place in the school district because of several resolutions I wrote around Medi-Cal, coordinated care, and then I championed one with Chinese students out of Chinatown with Ohio, which is called Our Healing in Our Hands. So I've been doing this work, and I'll finish up, right? In addition to addressing some of the issues that have been plaguing the school district before I even got there, such as the infrastructural budget that we're facing today, right? So we could talk a little bit more about that as I go on, talk to people offline about some of this other work. But in a nutshell, who I am, I'm a Pacific Islander, I'm a clinical social worker, I'm a father, and I've been doing exactly that work on the School Board.
Thank you for that. And before we go to Autumn, I just have one quick follow-up, which is, I wanted to know, what has this experience been like for you personally? To be on a recall ballot, to be in the news so much, to see all these books, petitions being signed with your name on it? Like, I want, where, I want to check in with you emotionally, like, what has this experience felt like for you?
Yeah, I think the thing that is on my heart every day is really around like, you know, what is gonna happen to my community, my peoples, if I'm not on this School Board, right? What's gonna happen to all the kids in the projects? What's gonna have the Pacific, what's gonna happen to Pacific Islanders? Because the district did not move until I got there around Pacific Islanders and wrote that resolution. Those are the things that kind of keep me going and just kind of reminds me that like, you just gotta keep going. You just gotta keep going. You just gotta keep going. But it's, it's been a pain in the ass, you know, be honest.
All right, let's talk about where the pain is coming from, Autumn.
I'm the source of that pain.
You're the source of the pain. So let's talk about who you are and what, what motivated you to be a, be kind of one of the leaders of this movement and to, to start this recall campaign?
Yeah, so I'm a parent. I moved to San Francisco with Shiva December of 2020. And we came from other districts that were handling pandemic very differently. When we came to San Francisco, we were expecting the schools to open at the end of January. And what we found was that not only were the schools, was the school district not opening on time, but it looked like they didn't even have a plan in place. We had a high school kid who was really struggling with distance learning. And we, we were both working on startup projects at the time, so we were able to be home and kind of try and help him. But even so, he would not get out of bed and he would not, you know, he was falling behind in his classrooms. He was a former, former honor student. And so to see him struggling so much was heartbreaking, especially since my kids are in the district's dump facility that had opened back in October. I saw the difference in my own kids and how much happier they were when they got back to in-person school and their friends. And so to see the difference between what my kids were getting and what every kid in San Francisco was getting was heartbreaking. It was so unfair that my kids could be back in in-person schooling, and every child in San Francisco was stuck at home, suffering.
Got it. Thank you. So what I don't want to do is I don't want to go through all the ups, all the various dramas, because we could spend the next 45 minutes doing that. But I think what I, what I would like to do, maybe, Faoga, is I'm gonna be cute here. How would you grade the School Board over the last two years? Because I guess, I get, I get the sense that if it weren't for the pandemic and the removal of in-person learning, it probably, we probably wouldn't be sitting here right now. That was one of the main, you, I mean, you're one of the leaders of this movement, and you just explained why you got involved. So how, how would you say the School Board did as a board over the last two years? And how would you grade their record, kind of running the school district?
So, just, just to be clear, you guys, like, I'm not here to defend the School Board, right? Just, I'm not here. They, they can come here themselves. There's six of them. You know where to find them, right? I'm here to talk about, with all due respect, Manny, you know, my performance on this School Board during a time that is being questioned in this recall, right? I'm not, you know, I'm gonna give myself a thousand percent, plus A pluses, pluses, pluses all over, you know? But the question that Manny has asked me today, that's not a question that I'm not, I can't defend the School Board, right? But since I've been on the School Board, the issues that's been coming up around the budget, around school reopening, check the records. Check the records, check the videos, check the meetings, right? I've been checking them off. Budget, $25 million in transportation, save it. Did that in the pandemic. Mental health, $5.5 million by 2025. So when you talk about that, school reopening, I've been saying, open up schools from the beginning, safely, together, together with our beloved mayor, with our Board of Supervisors, with the community. I've been aggressive and assertive about that from the get-go. So in terms of, you know, with all due respect to getting Manny graded in the School Board, you know, I can't speak for all of them tonight.
Got it. I'm, I, I respect that. And as a member of a public board, if someone asks me like, can you defend the SMTA Board? I probably wouldn't want to do that either, want to, wouldn't want to represent everyone. I guess my one, as someone who was in the middle of the voting and you were in these conversations, you know, why was it so hard to open schools when other districts seemed to be able to figure it out? Can you give us the, the, the real reason? Because, you know, you were one of the six people that was responsible for reopening schools. Can you explain to folks who maybe weren't in those meetings or weren't in those behind-the-scenes rooms, why it was, why it may have either seemed really hard or was really hard to get our schools reopened?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, you know, 85% of school districts throughout California were going through the same thing.
Don't mind speaking in the mic.
85% of school districts within California were going through the same thing. It was a, it was a really challenging time. And the truth of the matter is, it really came down to safety, right? People not wanting to show up to schools or feeling safe enough to come back to schools. There was no vaccines, right? There was no, the, the testing. The city and county, what people expected the school district to turn into something that it wasn't. So within a pandemic, we were asked to turn into a public health system. Teachers, principals, superintendent, you have, you have to now be a public health system, right? Very challenging, right? And I speak for the staff who, you know, still till today are struggling with trying to get on board with that stuff, right? But the bottom line is, it came around safety. And to the credit of our labor partners, right, people don't want to talk about this, they were fighting for their staff. They were fighting for their staff. And say what you want to say, right? But we were in a situation where people were potentially going to die, right? And so I think, you know, when you, when you balance those out and you're trying to make decisions on like, what's best for everyone, including our kids at the center, right? People were just really, really scared. And we, as a School Board, you know, and I know my, we as a School Board, and I know this because I was in the back doors, listening to people, you know, we're going through this together. We're trying to be really sensitive and mindful of how we make decisions so that we weren't putting anyone in danger in terms of losing their life. Let me just leave that with you guys, losing their life. And there were a lot of people who were really scared, especially, especially marginalized communities where resources weren't getting to, folks in public housing. We weren't even able to get a hold of some of the kids because people were like, in terms of technology, you know, usage. So the, the gap in terms of, you know, equity and resources, it really showed itself during the pandemic. And it was very, very challenging. And, you know, as a School Board, you're responsible for everyone. You, you have to make sure the teachers are okay, studio workers, kids, families, et cetera. So in a very general, big picture, it came down to safety.
Thank you. Autumn, I want to give you the opportunity to respond, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Could I just take it from here?
Yeah, what do you think about that? But in addition, I want you to also talk about, you know, why, why, why recall Faoga, right? There's three people on the recall. So how did you choose those three people? Why, why remove everyone that you've been, that you've put on the ballot? And why not just wait till the next election?
Yeah. So let me first talk, kind of in response to what you said, Faoga. I understand that people were scared. I think that was a primary reason the district didn't reopen. Teachers were scared in my school district too. And the district found a way to handle it so that the teachers who had health concerns could teach remotely, and the teachers who were younger and healthier could teach in person. And that kind of got the best of both worlds. I would have loved to see something similar in San Francisco. The interesting thing for me is that the fear persisted even after teachers were vaccinated. We were not back in school. We put teachers to the front of the vaccination line, ahead of people who are working in grocery stores and exposed to the whole community every day. And teachers got to go in the front of that line, and yet they never went back to school. Well, okay, never, they, they didn't go back to school until long after they'd been fully vaccinated. The other thing I want to emphasize is that we did lose track of a lot of kids during the pandemic. And I would hope that someone with an equity focus would be very concerned about that. If you read the article in the paper in the Bayview, we lost track of 8,800 kids during the pandemic. They did not get the schooling they deserved, and they fell really far behind. We, you know, the best equity is a good education. That's how I pulled myself up. That's how Gary Tan, who's one of our founders, pulled himself up. Without the education, we wouldn't be here today. And when you're cut off for that, even if it's a pandemic, like, you know, you have to do the work to bring people back to, to, to get them the education they've missed. And I haven't seen this Board acknowledge the depth of the learning loss that's happened, much less have a plan to bring kids back up to speed. I'd like to see a plan that says, that first measures with learning losses, then has a plan to address it, and then follows up to make sure that the strategies we're using are working. I'd love to see something like that from the school district, and it has been months and months and months, and this hasn't happened.
Got it. So that's the response to, to, to his, his, his answer to my question. Quickly, you know, why not just wait until the election? I mean, this, this has all played out in the public eye. There's been lots of feelings, you know, about it. Why, why a recall?
Well, we started this process almost a year ago. And there's actually three reasons why we think a recall needs to happen now and not wait until the fall. So the first one's the learning loss I mentioned. Kids are falling behind already. They're not getting the support they need to catch up. And if kids aren't reading well by the end of third grade, they tend to fall farther and farther behind. They often drop out of school. There are increased risks returning to crime. It's, you know, it's something that needs to be addressed quickly and well in order to get our kids back on track. So that's the first reason. The second reason is there's a superintendent search going on right now. And we're looking for someone who's going to guide our district over the next five to seven years. I want to make sure that person is good and competent and can run our district well. We're facing a lot of cuts, and so we want someone who can be efficient and thoughtful in the way that the district is run going forward. The third thing is the budget. We are facing a $125 million structural budget deficit. That means a deficit in recurring costs like salaries and building maintenance. And we have, we have the broad outlines of how to cut, but the specifics haven't been done. This Board knew about the budget deficit for a year. The District Administration, the VP of Finance, was begging them to pay attention to the budget, have conversations with the community about what needs to be cut so that we can do this in a thoughtful and measured way. Instead, it kind of happened at the last minute. A lot of the details are not in place, and I'd like to have people in place, I try to cut wisely and well if we have to cut.
Got it. Can everyone here, Autumn and Faoga, clearly? Okay, good. Yes. Okay, so I wasn't gonna do this now, but I guess it just makes sense. So your friend here next to you has listed three reasons why, why they've decided to do this now instead of just playing it out in a normal democratic process through elections. You don't, I don't want to make this a tit-for-tat, but what is your initial reaction to those reasons? One being the superintendent, or one being learning loss, second is a superintendent search, and the third is the budget and the feeling that you all are not doing enough to make sure that it's in, it's fiscally responsive, it's, it's in sound fiscal health.
So, how do I say this? Like, when you talk about learning loss, right? And you look at the data, you know, it's, it's a historical issue, right? It's a, it didn't, so when the pandemic first hit, we all sat in this little meeting, COFAX and all those guys. And I told them, I said, hey, listen, the people who are gonna be impacted the most are Black and Brown folks. Like I listed, Samons, Blacks, Latins, because these are the communities that this city, San Francisco, has not done right by historically, historically. So when people are bringing up data sets and a learning loss, the opportunity gap existed prior to the pandemic, and it's still there. New data came out two, three weeks ago. Our African-American kids are graduating at a higher rate now, more than ever, right? I was on the phone earlier today. Our Asian Pacific Islander kids, Pacific Islanders, I'm a Pacific Islander, right? The data around achievement is going up, right? So like, when you talk about learning loss, you have to understand historical context and the work that's being done on the back end. Everyone in the school district knows that we have an equity issue around Black and Brown families, right? But at the same time, guys, to the credit of the School Board, a lot of folks on the School Board and the people that we have now as staff, it is, and I know because I've been with these people, it's important to them. And I can't say that has been this case for the, you know, previously. So the data that we're talking about, learning loss, it's already there. It's, the data's actually going up. We're doing really good in San Francisco. And I actually opened up the Samoan Community Development Center's community hub during the pandemic to address Pacific Islander, uh, learning loss. I'm actually introducing a resolution next week to support that. So that's that. In terms of the budget, I already knew we were going into a budget deficit. The first year I was elected and I served in office, Rachel Norton, I was on the Budget Committee, she said, that is a big number. It's a big number. She hasn't seen it before. I think it was like 50 or 70. She said, that is a big number. And they said, next year is gonna be 90, the year after that's gonna be like a hundred something. I was like, all right, well, what do we do, right? And like I mentioned earlier, what's costing us so much money in the school district? So my thing, my focus, has been running contracts. Who are we doing business with that's charging us a bunch of money? Who are we doing business with that we don't need to be doing business with no more? That's why I said, the number one largest contract that was costing us a lot in this school district was the transportation contract. That was a whole debacle during the pandemic. And you, you go Google it, you'll see it. Readjusted it. Now that is saving us $25 million, right? That is to address this budget deficit, to address this budget deficit. And then the other piece is around Medi-Cal. When I got in, and people don't talk about Medi-Cal, I was like, well, what's Medi-Cal? Because it's not sexy. People was like, what's that? You know, it's social service federal government money. Prior to me coming onto the School Board, they were only bringing in less than $1 million. I passed a resolution during the pandemic. The resolution's a great resolution. I'm actually gonna be speaking at UC Berkeley about these resolutions soon. The resolution is going to generate $5.5 million in cert, in funding coming right back to the school district, right? So if you add it all up, you know, I'm, well, going to, you know, I'm addressing all these issues that have been brought up, why folks are trying to recall me, and the last one around the superintendent search. We need a new superintendent. Vince is getting ready to, you know, go celebrate. I don't know where he's going, Tahiti, Hawaii, no, retire, right? Good for him, right? But we do need a new leadership in place. However, we need, and I've been, you know, I just was on the leadership. I was setting up the whole process so that we could actually try to attract the most qualified candidates to come into our school district, right? I'm the one that's been on the School Board, even though she supports my recall. You need to still go talk to the mayor, right? Because it's not about, you know, okay, picking the superintendent for us. We need to pick a superintendent for San Francisco, right? And when we pick a superintendent for San Francisco, that means everybody's included in the process. So even if you don't support me, or if you do support me, I'm gonna still work with you, right? But going back to the superintendent search, it is an important, I think it's probably one of the most, I said it when, it's public record. It's probably one of the most important issues right now that we're dealing with, where we are getting ready to solve right now in the school district. And you need people who actually been on the board, you know, who understand the systems to be able to go in there and select somebody who's going to be able to run the school district.
That, that does, do you want to do a quick response? And then I have a question for you.
I just have one thing to respond to. I think it's really great that you're bringing in the $5 million a year to fix the, to, from the transportation budget and the $5 million a year in Medi-Cal funds. Those, those are great things. The thing I worry about is we're facing a $125 million annual budget, an annual budget gap. And so that's $10 million total a year out of $125 million, which is a really big number. If, if you're spending a lot of time looking for savings in the contracts and the transportation is the biggest contract, and we get $5 million savings out of that, that's great, but you still have $115 million more to cut every single year.
Got it. Do you want to respond to that, or can we move?
Right, right. Because I'm getting recalled because people said, I'm not focusing on the budget, right? That's not true, right? $25 million is a lot of money. $5.5 million is a lot of money, you guys, right? Let's not undermine that. To get to a place where individually, right, not as a School Board, these are things I've been doing individually, in addition to contributing in the larger conversation in terms of the budget deficit.
Yeah, I just want to make clear that's $25 million over five years, right?
Okay, so it's $5 million a year. Okay, so you've explained what the recall's about. There's been a little bit of back and forth on the merits of those, those reasons. Quick question for you, Autumn, which has come up. There are some people who are saying, well, if you want the school district to be, to be better run, wouldn't it make it more dysfunctional to take three people off of its leadership in the middle of these, you know, very important decisions that need to be made, choosing a superintendent, fixing the budget? So what is your response to that, that while you might not approve of the performance so far, actually getting like, you know, getting rid of a bunch of people on the board is, this is the wrong time to do it? Because this is a very important time to be making these decisions. So what do you say to that?
So I would say that I used to run a small business and
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
There you go.
And when I was doing that, I found that if you have someone in, 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 working for you who's not doing the job, and you try and teach them and it doesn't work, you know, you give them a chance, but if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, and keeping them And keeping them in place doesn't do you any good in the long run. Um, there are some people who are better served by freeing them to find a job that fits their skills and talents better. And, you know, if you keep them in a place where it's just not working out for anyone, you're not serving anyone's needs.
Got it. Okay. Question for you, which is another thing that I think has come up. When I, when I kind of, when we, we ask people to send us questions and I talk to my friends and folks about this. One of the things that people keep mentioning is when they, when they needed to be focused exclusively or entirely on, um, you know, school reopening, they instead, they were spending all this time and energy on renaming schools. And then there's all this like Maury-style drama in the school board where one person is stripped of their titles and then she's suing you and you're being sued and they're being sued and it's a hundred million dollars. And, you know, and then one thing after another, there's like all this drama. It's like that, the, the part of the, the frustration is, um, all this is distracting you from what you should be doing, which is getting kids back to schools. So what is your feeling about that? Do you think that that sense is warranted? That you all spent too much time focused on unnecessary things and should have been focusing more time on, uh, getting kids back in school?
Yeah, that's, that question does come up a lot. And, um, you know, my response to folks is, you know, um, we did end up voting to remove Commissioner Collins from her VP role. Uh, you know, and that was really around, you know, the, the Asian, the Asian hate tweets that were put out there and just kinda like her response to it and, um, really responding to the hurt in the Asian community and we had to go through that. And so I say that because when we removed her, you know, um, I ended up becoming the vice president on the school board. And so, um, you know, one of the things, and I, and I've heard that before, one of the things that come, you know, I tell people all the time is, you know, when I got elected as the VP on the school board, you know, uh, the thing I think about a lot is, you know, kids are watching this stuff, parents are watching this stuff. And, um, you know, somebody asked me, it was like, well, you know, Commissioner Collins was coming at you. Why didn't you, why didn't you, uh, why didn't you say anything? And I, you know, my response was, you know, I think right now the city is, is not looking for that. What, what we need right now is to be able to show like, you know, more, you know, humility, more like, you know, patience and the ability to be able to listen to people. And, um, you know, for me, that's what I chose to do leading into my vice presidency. And that's what I've been doing, you know? Like if you notice, like, you know, things on the school board in terms of like meetings, decorum, you know, listening to parents, being inclusive, working with the media, right? All of that just kinda like began to subside, right? Have a great relationship with the media, went sat down with folks and was like, hey, what's going on? What is it you need from us, you know? Just kinda just get everything back to level set, you know? And I'm not skirting around this, uh, renaming question.
Oh, I'm gonna ask you that.
Yeah. So the, uh, again, you know, the renaming, uh, the renaming issue that came up, you know, with the school board is, you know, I, I have no control over what gets, what gets put on the agenda. You know, those things are, you know, agendized by the superintendent in addition to the president, in addition to the folks that are at Agenda Review, you know? Um, I actually, you know, was, um,
I know, but did you, did you say like, may, did you like whisper to the, maybe not such a good idea to be talking about this right now? Maybe it'll look bad? Like, did you, I understand that cause I get it. Like, I'm on a board, you, I don't have no, I have no control of what goes on the SMTA board agenda. But like, if I felt like something might be hurting us, I do have the ability to lobby internally and say, maybe we shouldn't be talking about that. So did you do that?
Uh, yes. And, uh, I actually-
What, what were you talking?
What I was pausing was around, uh, I actually rewrote a whole new resolution to rename schools that addressed all the issues that people were bringing up in the public around historians, around being inclusive, and really putting it back on the community to drive the process. But it just was never agendized. So going back to the agendizing thing, like I had no control over what comes to the school board. And as any commissioner from here all the way down to LA, you have to talk about and vote on things that are agendized by your leadership, right?
So is it safe to say if you had been in charge, you would have not, you would have not agendized or spoken about renaming schools in the middle of the pandemic?
100%.
Okay. Okay. How did, what does that, how does that feel to you to hear him say that?
It sounds reassuring, but at the same time, you know, Malia, I did not see you standing up at any point and saying, hey, I don't think this needs to be on the agenda. Why are we talking about it, right?
It sounds like he said he did that behind, behind the scenes.
A lot of it may have been happening behind the scenes, may have been happening in your head, but we didn't see any evidence of, at the meetings that you were ever standing up and saying, hey, kids are falling behind. We need to do something to get them back in school where they learn best. You know, we've lost track of 8,800 kids, kids from my community. Why are we not addressing this? Why are we not helping them? I didn't see you stand up and say, hey, this renaming process should really be done on a school by school basis. I don't think this is the right resolution and I think we should table it because we need to focus on reopening.
Got it. So, um, I think we can all agree that it's, it was a very messy two years. And there were a lot of, I don't think anyone was reading the news and feeling good. Uh, whether you supported the recall or not, or the school board or not, um, it wasn't a great year, uh, for reflecting on, um, on this particular issue in the press. And so I do wanna, that was the past. We are here now. And what I'd like to do in our last 10 minutes, because, um, that's all we got, is I want to, um, focus on the future. And so I wanna go through both scenarios. The recall succeeds and the recall fails. So if the recall succeeds, uh, and in two and a half weeks, uh, and the three members of the school board, or two, or one, or whoever it is, uh, are recalled, your, my question for you is the mayor then appoints, would appoint the, uh, the new, the new folks.
That's right.
Does that make you feel good? Do you think that's like, isn't there a, isn't there a possibility that she could appoint people who would maybe not satisfy the desires of the people who wanna, you know, recall these members of the school board and actually not any fix any of the issues? Does that worry you?
That's always a risk. I do think it's unlikely that she would, um, appoint someone more controversial than Allison Collins. So I think that-
That was shade, I believe. That was just thrown.
So it's true that she could appoint people who are, um, not good. But here's the thing, she ran the learning hubs and she ran them well at a time when, um, everyone was running around this pandemic, not really knowing how to handle it. She got the learning hubs open and serving the children of essential workers so that they did not fall too far behind. You know, not a school, not a single school site was made available for that. She used community centers, um, and, and other facilities in order to keep kids learning. So she really has her heart in the right place for our, for our children. And, um, I think, I think she will do a good job. If she doesn't, you get to vote on them in like nine months or something. So you kind of get to try before you buy, right?
You feel, you feel more confident? You feel like she did a good job with the community hubs? And worst comes to worst, there is gonna be an election in nine months.
Yeah.
Fauga, if you get recalled in a few weeks, what do you think the ramifications of that will be on the district that you lead? You slash you and some combination of your colleagues?
Well, I think like realistically, um, the district is going to have to shift, right? So like, say, uh, three school board members get recalled. Like even if one school board member gets recalled, right? That's still like a shift in the school district. So like, you know, about this conversation with like staff members, right? They gotta get onboarded. They gotta get caught up to speed, you know? Depending on who the mayor appoints, right? I mean, she might try to go back and appoint, you know, previous school board members who may have the experience to do so, right? If she kinda goes that route, then you don't really have to onboard too much, right? But if she goes in a route where it's like, you know, you have to like bring on like three brand new spanking school board members, the learning curve is so steep. I mean, it took me a while to really kinda like get caught up to speed, but it, it, it is not an easy job. Plus on top of that, you know, they don't pay you anything. So like you're out there, you know, working, I think my first year I was working like 30 hours a week, you know? Mind you, they give you like $500 a month, right?
Oh, that's more than they give MTA.
So, so there's, there'll definitely be a, a learning curve, you know, uh, time, you know, and, and to, and I don't know if like the school district is in a position where they can do that right now, right? Because not only do you have to get caught up to speed with the superintendent search, you gotta get like, gotta get downloaded on the budget, you gotta get downloaded on, you know, COVID impacts and pandemic, right? And so, um, and then the, the board dynamics too, right? Depending on how that goes, um, you know, that is also like gonna be a change. So it's gonna be a lot of change. I know the school district is not really looking forward to, you know, um, having to go through that process, but they will if needed. But it's, it's, it's gonna be a change for sure. And, and we don't really know how that's gonna turn out.
And it sounds like there are some people that would welcome that change and there are some people that feel like that change would be, uh, not productive. So let's, that's one scenario. Recall succeeds. Recall fails. Uh, and let's go, it fails completely, meaning none of the, uh, members are recalled. What do you think that says, Autumn? Uh, what, what, like how would that, um, what do you think that means? It, uh, for your perspective on San Francisco, on the environment here, on, on how the public, do you think that that's a mandate and says actually, you know, folks do approve of what was done? Or how would you interpret that if it failed?
I think for us, um, our campaign has really been about giving families hope that there's a place for them in San Francisco and that San Francisco cares about what happens to its families, what happens to its schools. I think there would be a lot of families that would be very disappointed if the recall failed. Um, people who are hoping that the city stands up for them and stands up for the kids, who are sticking with our school district because they, they, they have the hope that things will change. Um, we have heard from a bunch of families who are, you know, on the verge of going to private school. And, and so far haven't been. But I think you would see a lot of them leaving the district and a lot more families leaving San Francisco.
Got it. Thank you. And Fauga, if the recall didn't, didn't, was not successful and you kept your, and I think a lot of people don't realize this, you're basically your volunteer position because, uh, most of, these are all volunteer jobs, uh, full-time jobs that you do on a volunteer basis. How would it affect your work? And like, how would it change what you would do on the school board? You survived a recall. How do you think that would affect your leadership? And maybe some of the efforts that you might put into, uh, your role as the vice president? Uh-oh, he's scooching forward.
Sorry, I gotta get up and speak. Um, say, say I win and you don't.
It's always a possibility, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna really, you know, w- once you run these circuits, you know, you start to, you know, see folks and that's with respect, you know? Let's say the recall does fail, right? And then, you know, I have to continue to be on the school board. Um, which for me is, you know, uh, there's a couple of issues that are really important to me right now. And, um, you know, some of them I mentioned, uh, but the other one that I didn't mention was around the bond, right? We have this bond that is actually, uh, getting ready to sell. And we need to re-up this new bond that's coming up, you know? And so like, um, I've been really like, you know, working with our, uh, staff to making sure that we execute the current bond so that when we come back to the voters, you know, we can bring another bond that the voters approve. So that's big on my list, you know, um, you know? And then, um, there's, uh, the Medi-Cal resolution that I talked about earlier, you know? I wanna be able to like serve on the board and finish knowing that, you know, um, the dollars are coming, but the piece around that, that I really am trying to get going is, I wanna build, it, it's in the resolution, it's in a policy. I wanna make sure that the, uh, the social service pipeline is created, right? So the social service pipeline is a pipeline that, um, it's kinda like a teacher pathway and it creates a pathway for social workers, nurses, and health workers to, um, to the school district, right? And so those are like projects that are near and dear to me. The other one is around the superintendent search, right? Like we have to land this superintendent. I was on the phone today, you know, with the, uh, HYA and, you know, talking about like, you know, things that, you know, um, I'm looking forward to seeing in the superintendent. So those are the issues, you know? But the thing that I've like actually, um, you know, one of the things I appreciate about this recall is, I've been able to, you know, and I actually said this to Autumn earlier at the Vis Valley, you know, be more than happy to sit down with Autumn, you know, Shiba, you know, to really kinda like understand and hear more about the things that, you know, is near and dear to their hearts. Um, you know, met so many other constituents around the city. Like when you're a candidate or when you're a public official, like it forces you to go in many different places, right? So met a lot of new folks, right? Like I'm excited to work with new, uh, people, you know, and just kinda like champion issues. Uh, but really just trying to bring, uh, a leadership back to the board where it's like stable, calm, you know, patient, really about community and people first. And holding the school board accountable to making sure that we're doing right by, uh, you know, um, our constituents. And so, um, you know, that's in a nutshell.
Okay, you heard it here first. If, uh, the vice president stays on the school board, he's gonna be working with the leaders of the recall to see how he can do a better job.
That's right. We'll have him over for chai.
Yes. Um, so we're gonna end this, um, in a way that we've been ending all of these, uh, conversation series, which is, um, you know, we have a lot of people on Zoom. And, and just FYI, for those of you who haven't been at Manny's event and you're thinking, wait, that was, why didn't I get to ask a question? Um, this is a shorter event, uh, format and we did ask folks to, to type in and send in their questions in advance. We use those questions to inform the questions that I ask. So normally at Manny's, it's much more participatory. We have a whole 20 minutes of audience Q and A. Today, we're not doing that. We, uh, did a different format for today. So the way we're gonna end it is, um, speaking to the camera, speak to the people here. I'm gonna give you, Autumn, uh, the first, the ability to answer this question, which is, should the school board be recalled? And what, and if so, why?
So the school board should definitely be recalled. So here are the, here are the reasons why. They, first, first is budget. They've ignored a $125 million budget gap until the last minute. Some of that money is, some of the, um, the current plan uses one-time funds to plug some of that money to, um, plug some of that gap. So the issue has not been fully resolved and I don't want people in place who are responsible with their funding in order to, to cover it. This board has not been responsible with the bond funds, for example. They did not create the necessary oversight committee. Um, and bond funds were spent without the necessary audits. There are some questions about like why Wanda Fesafor's man was dropped from the list, which had been the number three priority. A lot of people don't know where the money has gone in, to pass the next bond funds, which is desperately needed. We need to have proper oversight in place and leaders who we know are responsible with our money. The bond oversight committee is in place now, but it's only in place now because members of the recall campaign called into meetings again and again, asking for it. We're not gonna be here asking, you know, calling in again and again when we're not recalling people, right? So I wanna put, make sure we have good people in place to carry that going forward. Um, the second reason is learning loss. We wanna make sure the learning loss is addressed with a sensible plan that, you know, measures it, has good, you know, has good, um, tracking of what we're doing and why and what's working. So we can double down on the stuff that's not working and abandon the things that aren't. Um, I also wanna make sure that the superintendent search goes well. I think we have a joint, um, a joint goal for that to go well. So that the school district has good leadership over the next five to seven years. I want to see, um, someone in place who, who is again fiscally responsible, but, um, and good at focusing on the, you know, getting, getting the basics worked for kids who do not have the option to go to public school, uh, to, to private school. Because when the school district is not run well, it's the kids who are middle class and poor who are hurt the most. And there's no, there's no reason in a city like San Francisco that our schools should be failing the way they are.
Thank you, Autumn. Let's give Autumn a round of applause. It's not easy being up here and talking about these things. And so I thank you very much for all your work and your advocacy. Fauga Maliga, the vice president of the school board, should the school board be recalled? I think I know what you're gonna say. And why not?
Uh, pre- previous vice president of the school board.
Oh, I thought you were current. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. We, we just had elections last minute. Uh, Commissioner, Vice President Jenny Lab is now our vice president. So, um, well, let's see. So, don't recall me, you know, measure C first and foremost. Um, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but, um, you know, and that's not me endorsing recalling other people. As, you know, I'm, again, I've been here from the beginning when those signatures got valid to fight for my seat, right? And I've been in places where it's been super uncomfortable, you know? But, um, I'm here because I wholeheartedly believe that the issues and the things that are being said about me and my contribution to the school board, that it's not accurate. Yeah, it's not accurate. Um, I've addressed all these issues from the budget to learning loss, you know? During the pandemic, we created and built the first prees, uh, what is it? Um, preschool, sorry, uh, pre-K, pre-K program for, um, Samoan dual language. It's the first in the country, actually. We built that, you know, during the pandemic and that's out in the baby, right? Um, you know, when you talk about enrollment and trying to get kids to schools, right? Some kids are always gonna depend on this public school, right? And the work that I've been doing really focuses on, you know, addressing the needs of all families, but really the kids that are always gonna need public schools here in San Francisco. I created and built the Education Placement Center. The EPC Center is where you go to get transfers. You go to apply to try to get in schools. That is up and running now in the southeast, right? And then again, in terms of the budget, you know, I've been addressing it, right? You know, if you look at the vote that we just did recently around in December, right? I, including others, were the ones that championed it to make sure that we get, you know, solvent. The budget deficit that we have in the school district is an ongoing issue. It's a historical deficit because of the infrastructure of how the school district has been run. That's going to take time and effort. It's not going to be like a miracle, go in there, Band-Aid, fix today. That's going to take commitment within the next three years. And I've been committed to that. I will close out with this and say that this is a recall. This is not an election, right? I'm not running against Autumn, right? I'm getting recalled. The governor of the state was just getting recalled recently, right? People trying to get him out of his seat. And I say that to say, the bar to get an elected official out of their seats is higher than an election. It, it's higher than a regular election. And I could see if I was committing some crime, nothing. I could see if I was out here smuggling money, I ain't done none of that. I could see if I was out here, I'm actually the only one that got sued. Hurting other people, I haven't done any of that. The issues that are bringing up, that have been brought up today, I'm, I shouldn't be getting recalled. And I'll say this morally because we are in San Francisco and I'm not too sure how long folks have been here. I'm the first Pacific Islander to be elected in this city. That means something. It means something because we are a city, first black man, woman, right? First woman. This is a city that supports and champions issues around marginalization and diversity and inclusion, our LGBT community, our Latinx community. It means something to this city. This is San Francisco. Again, you know, vote no on measure C this upcoming election. And I appreciate you all for allowing me and Manny to just kind of share, you know, my thoughts and my platform on this recall. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Fauga. Let's give Fauga a round of applause for coming here tonight. Real quick, thank you all for showing up for this and for wanting to get more informed and wanting to hear whether you came in already deciding how you were going to vote or not knowing. I appreciate you listening. Thank you for keeping it respectful, keeping it civil. Thank you both for, for being honest and strong with your feelings, but also listening to each other. This is exactly what this is about. And I, I learned a lot. I, I'm really, really glad that I was able to hear both of you. And so thank you very much. We will continue this series. Should we continue doing stuff like this? I think so. Yeah. This is good. We need this. So we have, we have a couple more ideas in the works. If there's something that you think you want us to do, you can see Ram over there in the back. He is our head of operations. Tomas is over there. He's our head of research. And Precious over there is our director of programming. You can come to any of them and give them your ideas. I just want to quickly plug, very, very proud, we are in the midst of our midterms explained online series. So we've been able to get the five chairs of the Democratic parties of the key battleground states in the 2022 midterms, Arizona, Georgia, Michigan, Wisconsin, Pennsylvania. We already talked to the chair of the Pennsylvania Democratic on Tuesday, tomorrow at 12:30 for 30 minutes. It's 12:30 to one every Tuesday and Thursday. I'll be in conversation with the chair of the Michigan Democratic Party, Lavora Barnes. And the point of this series is that by the end of it, you will know everything you need to know about the midterms, the who, what, when, where, and why. It's free. It's online. You can find out about it on welcometomanys.com. If you'd like, you can take a photograph of tonight or the picture of the space and you can tag us at welcometomanys. We welcome it. I'm sure you can find more about the recall at
Recallsschoolboard.org.
Recallsschoolboard.org. Where can people find out more about you?
Nomoligarecall.com.
Nomoligarecall.com. Didn't know that was a thing. Okay, but now you know. And the final thing is Manny's is built and funded and supported on the backs of a community of individual sponsors. Most people don't know that, but we're funded by the community. So if you're interested in programming like this, you think San Francisco should have a physical civic space that hosts conversations like the one you were just a part of, please become a Manny's sponsor. It's $36 a month. And it all goes to funding our programming. You can find out more about becoming a sponsor at welcometomanys.com. You can find me or Precious afterwards. I really appreciate the support. Thank you all so much. You can exit through the back door or through here. And have a good night. Thank you very much.